Mr. Rankin.
We're going back in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that this closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the closed meeting be concluded, and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public matters, business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the motion passes. Do we have any motions out of closed session?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any motions out of closed session.
Nobody? Okay, thank you. Mr. Payne, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance this evening?
(laughing). Yes, that's right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you sit in the front row.[111.11][111.11](laughing). At this time, we're going to move right into announcements. We will likely have a special presentation a little bit later this evening. There will be a building committee meeting on Thursday, June 23rd, at 8:30 in the school administration conference room. Chairman's night is Tuesday, June 28th, at 5:00 PM in the school administration office. I want to make sure that we note that we're going to be changing our work session date till Tuesday, the 28th. So, please mark that on your calendars, okay? It's, for many people in this room, that's a fairly new development. There will be a school board work session Tuesday, June 28th, at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. The finance committee will next meet Monday, July 11th, at 5:00 PM here in Falkir High School Library, and the next regular school board meeting will be Monday, July 11th, right here in the Falkir High School Falcon Room at 7:00 PM. Everybody make note of that. Move on to citizens' time. Right now, community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating, well, we'll just leave it at that. Right now, I have one person on citizens' time. If anybody else would like to sign up, they can come up and do so, but at this time, I will ask Mr. Green to please come to the front and speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for this opportunity to say a few words. I have to ask myself, who is in charge of our public schools? I'm not talking just about our schools here, but throughout our country, our nation. It appears to be the federal government. Our constitution leaves education to the states. How has the federal government worked itself into a position of such importance? I think this involves two basic things. One, if you take federal funds, you have to go along with their requirements. You take federal funds for a school lunch, you get a federal school lunch. You eat what they want you to eat. But there's another area, and that is the federal government claims of civil rights laws that were passed in the '60s and '70s, much needed, but now they're using them in such a way that they were never intended to be used. And my purpose tonight is to ask the board to keep the community informed about what I would call the federal overreach. We have it up here, you know, public input, but without the knowledge, without some of the details. It's very difficult to do that. I'll give you a couple of examples. Not long ago, the federal government, President himself, announced that transgenders would now have a special place in our schools. Less than .03 of the population, but they get a special place. And I have to ask myself, what does this have to do with education? There are other ways that this thing can be handled, but to come out and blanketly place this across every school in the United States does not make sense to me. You're putting individuals ahead of society, and that's not good for society. Another example would be in St. Paul, Minnesota. Schools have directed their, the, "All schools will have equal disciplinary rates for all ethnic groups." This was forced upon them by the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, and now it applies to all schools in the United States. The federal government wants equal discipline regardless of conduct. I wouldn't want to teach in a class like that, but that's what the federal government has done to us. And then just last week, the Obama administration issued a policy statement advising states to instruct childhood students in home languages different from English, and to help them retain separate cultural attachments. Let's, I guess, say goodbye to e Pleribus Unum. I get the idea sometimes, that, not sometimes, a lot of times, that the Department of Education is not interested in the education of our children. They are more involved in the social engineering for their brave new world. Now, the media doesn't cover a lot of these things very well. We, the citizens, should have the opportunity to get this information more easily, so we can have input not just to the board, but to our representatives in Congress, so that we can help shape these rules and regulations that appear to make no sense whatsoever when they come to education. Thank you.
Thank you. Are your comments written in a typed form, or could you send them in?
I'll give them to Ginger and let her figure that out.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for citizens' time? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our agenda item number 11, reports. School board members may report on their liaison activities in committee meetings. We will start with Ms. Sloan.
Okay, thank you. I believe Chairman Gorg, you're going to give the finance update, and I believe Ms. Grove, you're going to give the personnel, since you were there. Perfect. I had the privilege of attending the Virginia School Board Association Law Conference with my colleague, Mr. Mason, and it was a well-done conference where we learned several things, and I thought I would share some things with you. We had a good session with the executive director of VAS, Ben Kaiser, who went through an entire description of really some things that have happened across the state that have been difficult when it comes to working with your school resource officers. So they suggested putting together an MOU. So I texted Dr. Jack, and lo and behold, shockingly, not shockingly, Falkir County is ahead on that. So Janice Bourne and others have been working on and have already put together some changes that were probably reflected in this, and maybe ours could have been the one that they used as the exemplary MOU, but they did share one with us. I have that to share, Ginger, with others, but it may be that ours is even better, and Dr. Jack said we would be discussing that at the work session on June 28th. So I look forward to that discussion then at that time. Secondly, we were, other pieces of good news, we were given the news that beginning July 1st, the filing that school board members need to do is being changed from semi-annually to annually. So there will be no December filing. School board clerks nodding happily to that. That'll just be done once a year. We did need to do it for June 15th, so she was very clear that this needed to come in this month, but moving forward, it will be a July 1 only. So that was a good thing for you, Ginger. And then we had a primer on ESSA, and maybe some of this is not news to you, but it was news to me, and I thought some of the folks at central office here might be interested in some of the highlights. The term "highly qualified teacher" is no longer being used. Raise your hand if you knew that. I'm looking at people, "Look at you, smart people." August 1st, but the definitions seem to be quite similar. We're just not calling them highly qualified teachers moving forward. They still need to be properly licensed and endorsed. We don't use the term AYP with 100%. I see hands going up. Everybody knew that, too. Of course, we withdrew from Common Core. HQT data still needs to be reported, but you just don't call it HQT, so we found that interesting. And then there was also some interesting updates on opting out of testing. Seems to be happening across the nation, maybe slightly less in Virginia, but some new information is supposed to be coming this summer on what numbers will count and what numbers will not count when a parent decides to opt out of state testing. Also, our state education agency is going to be sending us information this summer, as well as early as August 1st, on alternative academic achievement standards for our students who are on IEPs. The other update that I thought was of interest, and I have all of this that I'm asking Ginger to post, was some minor wording changes in the McKinney-Vento guidelines due to the increase in unaccompanied minors that have started to come into the state of Virginia. There's some more language on that that came in, and nothing else was, I thought, critical to share, but again, the entire PowerPoint can be posted, and we can share that for others. Then we had Emily Webb give us a legislative update, and I have given some legislative updates along the way. Chairman Gorg, you shared it with the board. Again, there were several that were of interest. I shared the dyslexia, House Bill 842, that passed, and that is effective July 1st of 2017. So I'm sure that will be of interest this year as we look at professional development for our teachers and those who are renewing their teacher licensure and some requirements. But again, it's July 1st, 2017, that that licensure changes. Also, lots of bills, and we've discussed this as a board before, concerning CTE, concerning certification of teachers, and concerning profile of a graduate. Lots of discussion about bills that passed there. Another one, oh, I might ask for show of hands on this one, because this was new to me. House Bill 1279 now requires four fire drills and four lockdown drills per year, and two of the, two fire drills and two lockdown drills have to occur during the first 20 days of the school year. That may be news to others. Yeah, that one, that one passed, House Bill 1279, and it is in effect this year. Four fire drills, four lockdown drills, two of those have to occur in the first 20 days of the school year. Okay, the lockdown was added. That was the part of the bill by Delegate Anderson that was added, the lockdown drill. Let me look at that. Well, I did. Nope, not affecting, nope, that was it. Legislative recap, and again, I have a whole PowerPoint that I can share there. And Mr. Mason, if there was something that I missed from that conference, please feel free to add. It was a pleasure to spend that day with you, and thank you for allowing me to go. I enjoyed the conference.
I think I'll kick it down to Mr. Mason, then. Any reports?
Excellent job of summarizing.[838.75][838.75](laughing).
Ms. Grove?
Building Committee, if you all read the minutes, you maybe have read something about the milestone communications, they're going to come, hopefully, they were scheduled for the 27th.
Hopefully on the 28th.
Hopefully, they'll be able to come on the 28th and share with the entire board the possibility, we're looking at, of adding some sites for telecommunications. Hopefully, that'll help out some areas that are kind of dead spots, so we're looking at that. And then Greg Livissee is very excited, because we have hired the custodian supervisor, Carla Brown, and that's a position we've been waiting for since Warren left us. And then also, you might have noticed something in there about the problems with the wastewater treatment plant at Mary Walter, and we received a letter from DEQ. Falkir County General Services contracts with WSA to handle that plant, so we are, it's, yeah, many layered here. Anyway, Ms. Bourne and Mr. Livissee are on top of that, and we, I guess, will be working with DEQ and WSA as we work through whatever the issues are there. And lastly, I just wanted to give another shout-out to Kira Holland. Here she is on the front of the freelance star, again, the region section. She made it to the top 50 in the spelling bee, and congratulations again.
National.
National, yes, yep.
Forty-eight.[958.43][958.43](laughing). Where'd it go?
Yeah, I think that's all I have.
She's from Marshall, right?
I think so.
I just wanted to, just wanted to get it clear.[971.25][971.25](laughing).
All right, Mr. Bland?
In addition to attending all three local high school graduations, I attended the Retirement Social for Those Leaving the School System and Looking Forward to Starting Their Second Careers and Doing New and Exciting Things. I also attended the Senior Banquet at the Mountain Vista Governor's School and actually delivered the closing remarks. Also, Dr. Jack, Janice Bourne, Frank Friend, and myself attended a presentation of the Travis Project at Highland School that was coordinated by Sheriff Mosier and his department. And just in case any of you all don't know about the Travis Project, the Travis Project is a sheriff's office initiative developed in response to opioid and heroin that's affecting our community. The Travis Project is named for a local Falkir County man, Travis Rose, who lost his battle with addiction and died from an overdose in May of 2015. Now, the presentation was accompanied by a powerful film called Chasing the Dragon, and they were very real, and for the most part, uncensored interviews with addicts, recovering addicts, and surviving members, surviving family members who have lost loved ones to this deadly epidemic. Last month, I attended the James Madison University Spring String Thing, which is every, every year, they invite 530 students from all over the state to participate on a weekend of stringed instruments in an orchestra-type setting. Only 530. This year, they actually had to turn down 120 applicants. So this thing is huge, it's attended by so many people from all over the state of Virginia, and it is so successful.
Duke, why didn't you go?
Well, because my granddaughter was invited to be there.[1114.66][1114.66](laughing). Thanks, Donna.[1117.16][1117.16](laughing).
And what district?
Cameron.
And what school does she go to?
Warranted Middle School, not Marshall.[1127.04][1127.04](laughing). The Mountain Vista Governor's School made several appointments at its governor's board meeting here last week. Yours Truly was appointed chairman for the second year in a row. Dr. Jack was appointed the executive superintendent in Falkir County Public Schools, was once again appointed the fiscal, fiscal agent. So Prashant, looking out for you there.
More work? Yeah.
More work. I also wanted to share with the board, I'm going to pass this around here, the incoming class for the Mountain Vista Governor's School this year. We have 210 students. Again, we actually had to turn down some applications, or actually, we have them on hold, just in case the numbers here don't work out. But out of the 210, I see Sandra smiling there.
Wow.
A third, folks, are Falkir County students. A third, 70 students, and we do still have more waiting. This is, again, such a successful program. Mountain Vista Governor's School is one of 19, I believe, 18 or 19 governor's schools in Virginia, and I tell you what, it's our belief, those on the governing board, that it is the best governing board. I mean, it is the best governor's school in the state. Highly successful, so.
Duke, when you mentioned, we have a third of the students, this is over seven counties.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just remind everybody that's seven counties.
Counties.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a side note on that, I know that the fact that the level of Mountain Vista Governor's School to get in, the requirements, particularly on math, I really feel are pushing a number of our students to excel in ways that they would never push themselves before, and just seeing that is really exciting, and bringing that 10th grade down means that more students.
This is the first year that we will be introducing the 10th grade program. So it's something that we've been, been working on for a long time, and a vision is finally becoming reality.
All right. I just wanted to do a quick plug for STEM Camp this week. We're going on, right? At Liberty, we have Minecraft. Is it all week or till through Thursday? That's amazing. Can't wait to see it this week. Just a report from the Finance Committee. We'll see our finance report here in a moment, but the Finance Committee did report on a number of initiatives that don't necessarily make it into policy, but regulations and procedures. Most notably is some ideas they have on streamlining purchasing and sort of getting into 21st-century best practices and some of the things we do. So, thank you all, the Finance Committee, the, you know, the Finance Group, I don't know which subgroup that was, but thank you for putting a number of those things together. And so, they've been very active, I think, from what we can tell, on really sort of improving processes and having, it looks, you know, some time to think and really being motivated towards that. So, really want to say thank you to Prashant, John, others, for doing that. Thank you. Dr. Jack?
Two things. One, the retirement reception was really great, and I, it reminded me that I needed to thank Dr. Mitchell for putting up with my abuse during the retirement dinner. But I think I keep you young, don't I? That's really what it's all about.[1413.25][1413.25](laughing). Younger, is what I meant. Admin Academy is scheduled for June 21st and 22nd at Ritchie Elementary School. We're looking forward to that. We have a great program lined up for our administrators. We have a lot of new administrators, so we've got some special things planned for them, and including the COP Sync training, which Janice is coordinating. That's a great program. It's, it's going to enable teachers, any staff member really, to report, instantaneous to report any hostile intruder within the building. So that training will take place for administrators on the 21st, I guess, first day, I think. And then convocation is set. It's never too early to start talking about convocation, except for August 12th at Falkir High School. Now, I don't think we've told Trip Burton yet that convocation is going to be, I didn't realize you were going to be here.[1466.43][1466.43](laughing). We are considering having convocation at Falkir High School, assuming the principal will go along with it. So we're looking forward to that. That's always a great event. We're going to do it on Friday this year, which is a little different, but we're looking forward to it, and it's, again, never too early to think about convocation, bringing all the new folks and veteran folks back.
Great, very good. Thank you very much. We will now bring up Mr. Swestha for the financial management report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. Jack, good evening. This is your financial management report for activity as of April 30th. This report is grouped by fund type, and the first fund is the School Operating Fund. In the School Operating Fund, revenues and expenditures are consistent with prior years. Revenues are tracking at approximately 80%, and expenditures are tracking at 73%. So the fund is at a positive balance. In terms of the other major fund types, the School Asset Replacement Fund is tracking at 94% for revenues and 48% for expenditures. Again, that fund is at a positive balance, as well as the Textbook Fund, which has collected most of its revenues at 95%, and expenditures are tracking behind at 28%. And finally, the School Nutrition Fund is, is tracking very closely, but actually, it looks like we are just kind of turned the corner into a positive balance. Revenues are at 71%, and expenditures are at 70%, so that's very good news. And that is all I have for this evening.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening.
All right. Dr. Wolf will present the Human Resources Department report.
Good evening, school board chair, school board members, and Dr. Jack. Each of you have the human resource report summarizing the activities for May. Just to summarize, we currently have, on this report, seven elementary school positions. Two have been filled since this report, four middle school and nine high school. The one from the Mountain Vista Governor's School has also been filled. And then we have three Special Education Student Services still open, and one school board office position open. Moving to classified, we currently have four elementary school, two middle school, two high school, and one facilities position open. We are focusing targeted recruitment in the area of school psychologists and school social workers. Those are two positions that are very hard to fill, and we have openings in both of those areas. But when this report was completed, we had extended 73 offers at that point in time to the current positions posted. Any questions?
Dr. Wolf, on behalf of Mountain Vista Governor's School, they ask that I sincerely thank you and your department for helping us through the process, the hiring process, and getting us some people on time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good group to work with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much. We will now move to consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the May 9th, 2016, school board meeting, and May 23rd, 2016, school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, the budget transfer for CSA, the Latin and Arabic textbook adoptions, the business and marketing and health and medical textbook adoptions, and the personnel actions, which include the newly hired, of hiring of two assistant principals, one facilities plan supervisor, the resignation of one office associate, and the release of one food service employee.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second on consent agenda, which include the minutes from the May 9th, 2016, school board meeting, and May 23rd, 2016, school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, budget transfer for CSA, Latin and Arabic textbook adoptions, business and marketing and health and medical textbook adoptions, and personnel actions, which include the hiring or new, of two assistant principals and one facilities plan supervisor, the resignation of one office associate, and the release of one food service employee. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, oh.
Yeah, we got to vote first.
Mr. Chairman, we have to vote first.[1792.04][1792.04](laughing).
Jumping the gun.
And Jasmine comes to us from Loudoun County.
Ah.
It's always nice to steal people from Loudoun County, where she's been a dean of students. She comes with extremely high recommendations from the folks up north. She has a background in opera, which is pretty cool, in addition to her background as an educator. And when she was asked about why she was interested in Faukeer County, she mentioned an interest in farming. So, Jasmine, I have just the person you need to get to know. Everything you'll ever want to know about farming is right here. So, as is our tradition, if you'd like to say a few words, now is the time to do it.
Sure. Well, that's my name is Jasmine Carpenter. And I thank everybody for welcoming.
Right, welcome. Welcome.
And one more introduction. Laura Hoover's not here. She's probably overseas somewhere. But Laura Hoover, who is currently our Director of English as a Second Language Programs, et cetera, she will be the new Assistant Principal at Pierce Elementary School, joining Mr. McDaniel.
Wow.
So, we hit two grand slam home runs. Dr. Mitchell's very upset, but we, we are very excited about our new assistant principals, and they're gonna do great things at Pierce and at Greenville.
Great.
Well, welcome. I was hoping you were gonna sing your introduction to us. It's all right. We'll get to that next time. All right. All right. We're gonna move on to information items. The first is on our policy for petty cash funds. Mr. Munch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board. Dr. Jek, you have in your package a proposed resolution that we are hoping that you will consider for adoption at the June 27th meeting. I'm going to very briefly run through this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions after that that you may have. This resolution would accomplish three things. First, we would reaffirm the amount of petty cash for the School Board at $1,350. That's been the amount that's been established since I've been here. There's no reason to change it. It's been adequate. The second thing that this resolution, the proposed resolution would do, is it would amend the petty cash policy that the School Board has to provide for daily transactions to be delegated to staff by the agent under the agent's supervision. Essentially, what that means is that the day-to-day transactions would be overseen by staff of the Finance Department, and they would be supervised by me, instead of the way that currently is worded, which leads people to believe that the agent is the one that does the petty cash on a daily basis, which is not, not in practice. And finally, this resolution would appoint the Director of Finance as the agent as provided for in policy. When I, when I arrived at Faukeer County Public Schools, we've been operating as if I'm the agent since I've been here, but in going back and looking at previous resolutions, the last time the petty cash policy was updated was back in 2012, and it did not appear to formally appoint the Finance Director, or anyone for that matter, as an agent, so we wanted to clean that up as well. I wanted to also note that there is an accompanying regulation that has been proposed for Dr. Jek's consideration and approval, and that would go into effect on July 1st with his approval. And what that does is, as you'll notice, the, the policy is very brief, does not have very much detail at all. So, that proposed regulation would provide a lot of the meat, the details, for how we would conduct these petty cash transactions moving forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All appears to be on the up and up to me.
Yeah, it was discussed with the Finance Committee as well.
Yes, and I think we, Finance Committee has, supports this.
We'll support it. Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-eighth.
Good set for the 28th.
Yeah.
Right now. Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth is fine.
Twenty-eight, yeah. Is that okay? Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Payne will present the Education of Migratory Children request.
Good evening, everyone. As Title I Grant Supervisor, I request that the School Board please approve the Title I Part C Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement. The signed certification form serves as our agreement of compliance should we ever have any migrant students, although currently, we do not.
Any questions?
No.
This every year?
Right.
Move to action tonight.
I would like this move to action this evening.
There you go.
Can I ask one question just about the form? It says to be, the form says to be completed by School Division, but it has James Madison University there. Is that because they are the agent?
That's right.
Okay. Because it does not say Faukeer County Public Schools anywhere here. I was just trying to make sure. Okay.
It requires two signatures, the School Board.
Yeah. All right, okay. Thank you. Okay. Our next discussion point is the ESSA Grant, formerly known as the, the Child Left Behind Grant.
Yes, Mr. Gork, board members, and Dr. Jek, good evening. We're presenting for your approval tonight the Federal Consolidated Grant for 2016-17. Most school divisions in the Commonwealth receive five major federal grants that affect instruction, Title 6B Special Education, the Carl Perkins Grant CTE. The three that I'm presenting tonight are Title I, that focuses on supplemental education, primarily in reading, a Title II, Professional Development Grant, and Title III, English as a Second Language. All of these are under the newly authorized ESSA Grant. Ms. Sloan was just talking about, the state does permit us to submit this as a consolidated grant. We think that's a good idea because it allows us to, to collaborate. We're required to emphasize with this new authorization, three goals, mastery of college-ready standards, supporting students' timely graduation requirements, and supporting effective instruction, which used to be called highly qualified teaching. It's now no longer called, but it's the same thing, basically. One of your attachments shows the overview, which must explain how we use local funding first and use the federal dollars as a supplement. We have to explain that, so if you read the overview, it's a little redundant in that regard. And the other attachment is the budget, which you see now, the total of these two grants is a little over a million dollars. That amount may change. We don't receive the actual allocations, and we are advised, since this is due in July, to use last year's amounts. We ask that you approve this tonight, if you approve this.
Matter of that Laura's name's up there, is that not a big deal?
Oh, no.
Okay.
She's, Bruce and I have an agreement. She'll be, she'll be, we'll be hanging on to her feet as she leaves the door.
Have any questions about this at this time?
No, there's no problem with that. Because she prepared it.
Okay.
Nobody? Move to action.
Okay. Great. Our final information item is the Middle School Advisory Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jek. This is just to update you on where we are with the middle school modernization process. In mid-May, we sent letters of invitation to committee members. We included those who had volunteered, as well as other targeted agencies. We tried to do a broad spectrum of people across the county. Among the groups represented on the committee are teachers, administrators, support staff, students, parents, community members, town, county, and school board representatives, representatives of the clergy, community college, and public safety. There are about 50 people, and when we sent the letters out, we have received responses from almost all individuals. There were only a few who, because of schedule conflicts, could not participate, but we did send out additional invitations to fill the groups so that we were well represented on the committee. This summer, we plan to offer tours of Warrington and Taylor Middle Schools for any committee member that perhaps is not familiar with the school and would like an opportunity to get in the school to see it. So, we're gonna be sending a letter out. Dr. Jek will be doing that this week to thank them for their participation and let them know about the tours. We also are lining up a tour of the new Frederick County Middle School in Frederick County, Virginia, which is gonna open this fall so that committee members will have an opportunity to see what's happening in new construction in middle schools. And so, we have, we hope to have that done this summer. We plan to kick off the first committee meeting in August after school starts. We just felt like summer was just not the right time to start meetings. And the first community dialogue, which we will get word, start getting word out in, probably in the next month or six weeks, advertising the date, is gonna be here in the cafeteria on September 7th, and we'll try to, we'll open it up to the community to come out for that. But we will have a committee meeting before that in preparation for that community dialogue. Throughout the process, we will be posting information as it becomes available on the website, and we will post a list of the committee members on the website later this week.
Good.
Any questions?
I, I do have to say, people really appreciated the letters. They were very clear.
Oh, good.
So, I got comment from people who said, oh, I'm really excited that I was listened to, and they were very clear on what the responsibilities would be, so.
Yeah, great.
So, very good feedback.
Well, our goal is to have a really open dialogue about what this community wants in a middle school, and how we would proceed to modernize one or both of those schools. And so, that's our goal, and we hope that this will help us move forward with those. Thank you.
Do we have any motions for action items?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, a motion that the School Board move information items 8B and 8C to action items 14A and 14B.
How about 13?
13.
13B.
14. For, yeah, Roman numerals, for consideration for approval this evening.
There's been a motion and a second that the School Board move information items number 13B and 13C to action items 14A and 14B for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. All right, here are the action items.
I'll move.
I've got 14 on mine.
Ready? I'll move that the School Board approve the Title I Part C Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the School, that the School Board approve the Title I Part C Education of Migratory Children Regional Program Agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Eyes have it. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Is there a motion on the ESSA Grant?
Yes, I move that the School Board approve the Faukeer County Public Schools 2016-2017 Consolidated Application under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and authorize administration to file the application with the Virginia Department of Education.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the School Board approve the Faukeer County Public Schools 2016-2017 Consolidated Application under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and authorize administration to file the application with the Virginia Department of Education. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the eyes have it. The motion passes. Thank you very much. I think we'll try to do our special session later. Okay, great. Do I have a movement, move to?
Second.
Admon. Thank you very much for attending tonight.